Order. If you would all stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Father, we thank you. God, for having mercy on us one more time, for giving us our being just to be here this night. Lord, we ask that you'd look out for those, Lord, around us, for those that we know, God, who are sick and in troubles, Lord, and only maybe you know about. God, we ask that you'd lead, guide, and direct us, Lord, through this meeting as we move forward. We ask these favors and juices.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Take a motion, we approve the agenda.
And a motion by Mr. Bell, and a second by Mr. Long. All those in favor? Favo. Now we can get right to the student recognition. And Mr. Perry with the JMS Reading Bowl team. Bringing hardware.
That's right. I was lucky enough to go see our Jasper Middle School Reading Bowl team go and compete over at Gainesville Middle School for the regional competition. And for the second year in a row, they have placed third. And this year, they placed third out of seven other schools. The gym was packed, elementary school, middle school, high school. And I think we ought to be very proud of our Jasper Middle School team. They did outstanding. And it's nerve wracking. You know, you go to a lot of athletic events and you see these guys and they train all week long and they get out there and they compete. And you think, you know, they've worked really hard. You go to this and you sit in the room with them and they're sitting there and they're having to compete with all these parents and everyone just right on top of, hovering over the top of them. I don't think anybody gave them answers, but they do outstanding under pressure. And I was so, so proud of the way they've worked. And there's a way to make it work where you can see that's, I was talking to Mr. Bell about this. The leadership, the older ones, they've been there, they've done it, they understand how it works. And the ones who have come up through the elementary schools, the more practice they get, the better off they are. And I was just very, very proud of them. They're so bright, so much brighter than I ever will be. But let's go ahead and let's recognize them, let's bring them up here. We have certificates for them. And I'm sure, Dr. Perry, y'all have your special thing that outweighs all of this. But here's the trophy. We're very proud of it. And thank you, Reading Bowl team. Y'all do an awesome job and you always represent JMS well. All right. Brooke Bell. Julia Craig. Ariel Fowler. Gus Gibson. We have four team members, also they're playing on the soccer team. And they have a game tonight, which they're undefeated, by the way. Seth Green. Nathan Hamilton. Penelope Hobgood. He's a J. Brett Menard. Sadie Phillips. Heather Vincent. Adam Hunt. And last but not least, Elizabeth Keane. And I also want to point out, Ms. Purdue, our media center specialist, she's the coach of the team and she does an outstanding job with them. She works very hard at trying to get them ready. And so do some of our other teachers. They pitch in and they do a great job. So thank you all. Hey, hold the hardware too. I'm not taking credit.
Nathan, I cannot see Ms. Andrew. It's Nathan's finger, isn't it? At least talk.
Let's get Ms. Purdue up here.
Ms. Purdue? Where's she at?
She's back.
Ms. Purdue.
I thought you said come up.
Mariam's pretty sure.
Okay, good job, guys. Cut the cactus to the rim.
We might all be after pictures. Mine are awful. Yeah, mine are blurry. Did you get given? I couldn't see very well. You might have to get one from me. They're all blurred.
Next we have Dr. Mu with All-State and District Honor Band recognition.
Thank you, school board members. Dr. Perry, Mr. Landau, Mr. Landau, I saw him earlier. He's out here. As you know, to high school, we focus on the excellence in the four A's, academics, athletics, the arts, and attendance. I promise you, in April and May, we're going to put a lot of focus on academics. We've got a lot of things happening, academics, I'm looking forward to sharing with you. But tonight, tonight, we're going to focus on two, fine arts and athletics. And I'm going to let Coach Parker deal with the athletics. But this gentleman behind me here has got some exciting news. We've got some outstanding group of musicians here that we want to recognize, very proud of them, both for their district and state accomplishments. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mu at this time, our excellent band director.
Your spokesperson is not here tonight?
No. No, my wife is at a soccer game with my son. Sorry. She's way better looking than I am. Thank you, and it worked out really well. All right. Every year, the Pickens High School Band has many students audition for the district honor band and for a chance at Allstate. The state is divided into districts and our district includes Forsyth, Cherokee, Pickens, Gilmer, Fannin, Dawson, Lumpens, Townes, Union, and White Counties. We had 20 students auditioned at the first round auditions in December. And of those 20, 12 advanced to the final round Allstate in Houston County on January 9th. Over 800 students auditioned in our district. These students, as I call your names, come on forward. I want to do a picture for each group. Sam Barber is actually at a tennis match, Sam Barber Euphonium. Faith Dement, trumpet. Blue Goodman is actually at a tennis match. Elizabeth Howitt is the goalkeeper for the soccer team. Kayla Lau, flute. Danielle Odell is percussion and she is at a winter guard rehearsal. Andrew Olson, trumpet. Oh, I lied, no, wait, she's here, there she is. I didn't see you sneak in, I'm so sorry. She did come from a winter guard rehearsal. Andrew Olson, trumpet. Kayla Roberts actually got sick after school, she's not feeling well, so she's home right now. Dylan Shelton, trombone. Jolie Simmons on oboe, also at home right now. Dale Smith percussion. And Roman Tapia on flute. And these are all the students that were advanced to the second round.
They're taller than the board members.
All right, some of them will come right back up for this. This is the second bunch, this is the district honor, y'all can move to the side, or you can come back up for a second. Oh, I'm sorry. I've come that way for some cupcakes. Some bottom down ladies, that's the cupcakes I was promising you. The district honor band results came out of that first round audition and we had 16 students selected for those bands. So for the 11-12 honor band, we had Kayla Lau on flute, Natalie Klein, clarinet. Andrew Olson, trumpet. Dylan Shelton, trombone. And Sam is at tennis. Danielle Odell again. And Roman again. Also with this same bunch, Kayla Roberts, who is sick tonight, Jolie, who is out. Faith Dement, trumpet. Blue and Elizabeth, who are at sports. Dale Smith percussion and Bethany Carver percussion. And the last two, we had Rosa Willis on flute and Chris Bell in percussion. These are all members of the honor bands. And this is held up at Fannin High School over a two day event. They come on Thursday, have a rehearsal, then three rehearsals on Friday, and then perform on Saturday. So this is all the members of the 11-12, of the different honor bands. All right, and finally, all right, y'all move to the side again. Oh, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. All right, and finally, out of the, out of all the students that you have to achieve a minimum score at the district level in order to go on to the state level, over 1,100 students auditioned for the Allstate event and two of ours were selected. They spent last weekend in Athens, Georgia for the three day event. That would be Faith Dement on trumpet and Dale Smith in percussion. Faith was 13th chair trumpet in the state and Dale was first chair percussion in the state.
Well, now why don't y'all kind of get around them? Because we are in a picture, please.
All right, well, thank Mr. Mu for all he does to help me. We want to recognize the wrestling state qualifiers today. We had four qualifiers. Two of them cannot be here tonight. First one, recognize Joseph Ferguson. Come on up, Joseph, he qualified for a state tournament in wrestling. And we also want to recognize Kobe Milner. Kobe was actually a state champion for his weight class, 106 weight class, second year in a row. First person that we can figure, find in any sport to win twice, win the state championship in our school's history. He's only a junior, so no pressure.
Sure, by what you did.
Please do that.
No, I don't want to be my face slammed in the mat.
I'd like to see that.
He said, I want my face slammed in the mat. She goes, I would like to see that.
When you do that, it's like, this is where you're giving Dr. Perry a hard time.
Kobe can't have any cupcakes?
Pitts County School District is joining in a statewide celebration to salute the efforts of local school board members. Sponsored by the Georgia School Boards Association, the week of March 14 through 18, 2016, has been proclaimed School Board Appreciation Week in Georgia. Citizens elect board members to represent the community's voice on education matters and to set the vision for the school district. Our board spends countless hours fulfilling its responsibilities and working together to continually improve our education system. As constitutional officers of Georgia, school board members are responsible for setting educational policies, employing school personnel, providing buildings and equipment, operating a transportation system, and dispersing school funds. As community leaders, school board members serve as advocates for the children in local public schools and must study, evaluate, and decide with what actions are in the best interest of those students. We would like to take the time to recognize our local school board members and thank them for their service to Pickens County. Mike Coward, school board chair, Delane Lewis, co-chair, Peggy Andrews, Byron Long, and Daniel Bell, board members. And thank you very much. We have, you have a gift, and we also have certificates for you.
You're already using their gift.
Are you using your gift already? Good job. Awesome.
Thank you.
I just got your young ticket, come in for the picture. I drove here for the picture.
You drove here for a picture?
Yes, for the picture.
You were five minutes late?
I know. You've been with President and you're complaining about this picture.
I figured what I thought the President was, and I read it.
Thank you very much. Don't ask.
I looked in the top of it, it says shield me. And I'm thinking.
Can y'all cut down?
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the superintendent reports. First will be a financial update with Ms. Amy Smith. She'll be waiting for the microphone.
Once it's got our general fund pulled up, and as you can see, we've collected 72.95% of our budgeted revenues. Draw your attention to the top line as always. We're at almost 89% collection on property taxes. At this time, last year, we were at 93%, so a little bit behind where we were at this point last year. Our budgeted expenditures, we have expended 51.94%. Of course, I always remind you that we have a couple of extra months there that come in June. Those non-12-month employees, we're only half, we're not even halfway through their payroll cycle, so those large expenditures will stack up in June for June, July, and August. Do y'all have any questions on this report? Our SPOLOST update. We collected $300,725.47 in SPOLOST revenue, earned to interest of $740.22. Had one check that we wrote for, to purchase Microsoft Surface Pros for staff members at every location. At the end of the month, at the end of February, we had $3,775,942.33. And update you on our 12-month average, as soon as I can turn my page. We're still hovering around $341,000-342,000. I'm glad we're hovering there. We had one month that was up and one month that was down. It does make me think maybe the, either something happened with the collection period at the state level where the way they collected it, I don't think our, I don't think they used the same exact number of days, is that something, there was a glitch there somewhere. That doesn't normally happen. But we are glad to see it holding strong at a little over $340,000. I did want to give y'all a heads up, of course, we'll have Department of Audits joining us soon. I don't have an official date. We anticipate it, we're already preparing for it. When they come in, they usually stay with us about three weeks. They don't care if it's spring break. They'll come and get their stuff and leave and come back when we come back sometimes. But just heads up, if you see some different faces in there pretty soon, or see me kind of running up and down the hall a lot. Another thing I want to throw out, I sent an email out to y'all today, don't know if everybody got a chance to see it, throwing a couple of dates out for possible budget workshops. One is March 31st, which is a Thursday, I think Thursday's the preferred day for everybody. And then also April 28th. So y'all, if y'all can let me know if those work for you, we'll get them on Master Calendar with Martha and have you something prepared by that time.
Okay, a couple of clarifications. We get audited every single year, right?
Yes, sir. You can opt out of the state doing it and you can pay an outside group to do it. They did that, I believe, back in 98, 98 or 99? I think it cost them back then about $25,000. We paid. The board at the time, that was before I worked here, but the board at the time wanted just a different group to come in, they're, made everybody feel better. But the thing about the Department of Audits, even though it is a part of the Department of Education, they are their own separate entity. Because Financial Review, who works with Georgia Department of Education and Department of Audits, don't always agree, but these are the people that tell me what to do and then these are the people who audit me. So it's good, you know, I have someone to talk to at the state level and I do quite often talk to them, you can get to them. The auditors, I know we will not have our same lead, I don't think our lead will even be on our team this time, so we may have a new group. But it's good to have different people come in, it is totally independent. There is nothing that can happen to them, like we can't cause any undue influence on that group when they, you know, so it's set up very well. It's good to have them come in, they know schools, they know colleges. Independent auditors don't know how we work. And what I understood from last time, we hired someone to do it from the outside, our folks had to tell them what they were looking at. So Department of Audits, they know what we do, they do it every single day, they can look at a transaction and tell exactly what happened with it and whether we should have done it or shouldn't have done it. So it's a good check, I mean, we also have monitors that come in occasionally, and that's even a different team, that is a DOE team. So it's good to have other folks come in. It's a lot of work, a lot of kind of chaos when they're there because we have to pull a lot of information for them, but it's a good double check for us. I like having them come in, I don't have a problem in the world, I'd rather them come in and if we're not doing something we should be doing, tell me, we'll fix it. But we've gotten pretty good audits over the last few years, so we anticipate them arriving. Y'all have any questions?
Okay, I got one more.
Okay.
Just so I understand the full weight of it and everything. So we do not receive five mils from the state on our QBE contra debit account. That amount is the same every, I mean, for the budget, that amount's the same. But if we don't collect 100% of the taxes, we still leave that part to the state, correct? They don't adjust because of the taxes we collected.
What we get, or what they withhold at the state level, has absolutely nothing to do with what happens locally.
Right.
Our local taxes, it's a whole separate thing. They don't, they don't know, I mean, we transmit data to them, but they'll issue that QBE allotment sheet beginning of the year and they'll do a midterm update. But that QBE allotment sheet comes in, should come in March, but typically around April or May. When we get that, once it's official, you divide it, that whole number by 12, and it's in 35 different categories, and that's why you have the contra accounts. But they withhold their, they call it local five mils. No, it does not really truly equate to five mils, but they keep it, it doesn't matter what happens.
Right.
If we didn't collect half of what we expected on the local side, they're going to send us the same amount of money, it doesn't matter what happens locally.
Wanted to make sure I was straight on that. Thank you. Next, we have the attendance update.
Thank you. Thank you, Joey. Thank you, board members, for all you do. Appreciate y'all very much and happy board appreciation. Want to look at the dropouts, if you'll notice the number, 14. Happy to report that we had two seniors that we were able to get back in school. So that's a good thing. So I did want to give you that good news. If we look at the, let's do the attendance for the system. Well, Dr. Wiles, again, congratulations.
Oh, you get the evening.
On your attendance, 95.55? I believe if I'm looking, or is it 95?
95.
So congratulations, Dr. Wiles. Did you ring the banner?
I did ring it, but I still have it in my hands right here.
Okay. Well, if you want, you know, if you want your picture.
Third time's fixed, bro.
You know, in the paper, you have to come up and you have to unveil. I would ask you to look at, look below and, no, I'm sorry, I'm thinking on another, the staff attendance, never mind, I'm on the wrong channel. Come on, come on, you're right, you're the winner, but you gotta, somebody's got to help him hold the banner. Who's second?
I'm not second, I don't deserve it.
Who's in second?
Who's second?
Sounds like Sarah Brooks to me, nobody can hold it.
I'm telling you.
Harmony.
95.77.
They're all mad. They're all mad at you.
Now, this is real interesting to see who's fighting over who's going to hold the other end of the banner. All right, congratulations, Dr. Wiles. Make sure to express sincere appreciation to all your students and staff. And cupcake? I am happy to say that I did attend a conference Monday, Tuesday in Savannah. Talked a lot about attendance. And when I left there, I felt really good compared to a lot of other systems in conversation and they were talking about where systems felt like they were as far as attendance and as far as what was being done and the agencies working together. And I can tell you, I left there feeling really good because we, we have a really good system here. We have our agencies that are working together and that means a lot, I mean, you know, you've got everybody working as a team. So I'm just, I'm just very, you know, I just
So I'm just, I'm just very, you know, I just want to say thank you to all of our community agencies and everybody that works so hard to help us with this. Now for the staff attendance, let's congratulate Tate Elementary School, Sandy. Please come up, 97.78 percent.
Hey, that's with two pregnant women.
Oh, wow. Y'all heard that? Congratulations. And, you need to just come up and get your picture. I knew you was. But if you'll notice, look who was next, Todd, 97 percent, both middle schools.
That's really good.
Look out, Shane Penny shooting behind you.
I don't know, I see three of the last four.
I will say this, though, I think that we have such a high attendance with our staff and our students, it's got to be paying dividends. It has to be paying dividends.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, you know, having these students in, in the classrooms, I mean, that's the whole key. And our teachers, you know, as well as working hard with those kids, and so it takes a village and, and we appreciate everybody, certainly. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our operations and construction update with Mr. Gill.
Good evening. Pretty short and sweet today. Maintenance, we're in the process of compiling a list this summer. I've asked the principals to send me their wants and their needs, because they're not going to get all their wants, we hope we can get their needs. We're breaking it down a little bit and trying to get a better handle on that. And I'll be bringing several hours for discussion later on some summer projects and things that we're looking at and let y'all make some decisions. The general maintenance issues are always ongoing around here. Transportation, we have our bus rodeo on April 30th. It starts at 9:00 a.m., rain or shine. We'd love for some of y'all to come and judge, if you can. It's a treat, you get to see some good things and, and see some good drivers, they do some, it's amazing what they put those buses through, it's good. So if you can come, come, public needs to come too. If you can come, if you want to volunteer, you're welcome to do that too. Driver skills assessments for the drivers are in the second and third week of March. These results are always logged into superintendent's report that goes to the state, so it's important that we do these things in a timely fashion. Our next training class will be March 21st through the 25th. If you've got anyone you could recommend or push our way, we'd take them. We had a resignation last week, and this time of year, field trips are so bad, I'm pulling maintenance drivers, maintenance people to drive buses right now, it's killing us, we're just, we just don't have enough subs. We'll be sending out the state survey in March, and this is a report that goes into superintendent's report also, and it logs our mileage and our ridership and times, and this is, this is a factor in the formula from the state of money that we get, so it's important that it's done correctly and submitted correctly and on time. That's coming up. Security, they said we had three arrests, two at the high school, one simple battery, and one alcohol furnishing to a minor. JMS, one reckless conduct, 25 citations for truancy, which she was telling me that they can't serve them all because we don't quite have enough help, there's so many citations to be served. No vehicle accidents this time, which is great. K-9 searches at the high school, we had 84 vehicles, 16 classroom, and nothing at JMS or PCMS. And food service, Beth said she's a little slow right now with her reports, but she's working on a lot of things that she's going to be bringing to you, and we'll be talking budget-wise on several things. It's her time of year to start raining a lot of stuff, so she promises next month you'll be tired of her. That's it, and I want to appreciate y'all for what y'all do too. I think y'all are a great board to work for, and I've worked for several boards, I appreciate your efforts.
So you're working on a date for us to visit some middle schools?
Yes, yes, a couple of middle schools. And Dr. Perry gave me one to shoot for today that I'll call and see if I can arrange it and we can make a loop and get two schools at two different places, just to start looking at some floor plans and things.
Maybe whole March 24?
Yeah.
Is that one?
Yeah. Thursday, the 24th, I think you said?
Thursdays seem to be better for y'all.
We have a meeting, haven't we?
The 24th or the 17th?
No. No, we don't, that's the one we have open.
That's one I'm thinking of, we'll double check.
Yeah, Amy's the last one.
She's, yes.
Any questions?
Thank you. That one should be a fun one, to come and visit all the schools.
All right, guys, appreciate y'all, really does it a privilege to get to come up here every month and talk about our athletic program, our extracurricular activities, and genuinely do appreciate you guys since the school board, appreciation time, make sure we show you guys how much we appreciate you, but we appreciate you every month, not just this month. But with our athletics programs, we've had a big month, a lot of things going on as our winter sports had concluded and our spring sports started. Basketball programs, both had very successful seasons, boys qualify for state tournament for the sixth time in 60 years. Had an all-region player in Holden Roof, been an honorable mention all-region player in Trent Vazadi. Our girls' basketball program had McKenzie Hampton, Autumn Young, Ashley Nelson, and Madison McClure all receive accolades. But I wanted to highlight a couple of things that our young people did off the field. Our girls' basketball program has been working with Jasper Elementary School PE on Jump Up for Art, and they've been able to go over there, and we had our community council, our community athletic council met, and one of the things that came out of that meeting was our rec department showing us some data and some information on the lack of girls participating in the, you know, in the rec ages, so third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, we don't have the same number of girls that we had years ago, you know, five, 10 years ago. So, I mean, one of the things that came up was we could, you know, try to get the young girls interested in participating in middle school and high school. So we got our girls' basketball team together, and they've actually spent some time, and they're going to spend more time, going to some of the elementary schools and working with PE and just kind of being a role model for the girls and, and really the guys too, but give them an opportunity to see some positive influence and some older girls. So really proud of them for volunteering to do that and proud of our community council for, you know, making, making some real progress there. Took, actually took all of our, out of that, we kind of developed a mentor program for all of our sports, working with elementary and the middle schools, and took, took at least one athlete from every sport, boys and girls, to all four elementary schools on March 2nd for the Read Across America Day. And it was really a great opportunity to see on both sides how the young, the young elementary students were very, you know, enamored with the older students, they might as well have had Tom Brady or, you know, they didn't know who was there, those guys were big to them and that was always neat to see. But, you know, it was equally as impressive to see the young, the art, the high school-age students, you know, how they learned, how much those young people looked up to them, and it seemed like it was very beneficial both ways. So really proud that the guys were so, so positive, and we got some really good reviews, you know, from the teachers and administrators involved with that, and really proud of them. Had, got our fishing team that started up, you know, we had our inaugural fishing tournament, we hadn't, trying to add as many opportunities as we can for all people in our system to have opportunity to do extracurricular activities. Fishing has really taken off, man, it's been a, been a real success, proud of those guys. And of course, now with our spring season, you know, golf and baseball and soccer and tennis and track are all, you know, in full swing, and we'll have some updates on them. Wanted to highlight our community council, which we did, we met, got people from all different diverse parts of the county with different ideas, and we're able to take several of those ideas and start implementing, and one of which was, you know, the reading program and working with the girls' basketball team. Also, do we have a picture of that one? I thought we had a picture of that one. There we go, look at that, there's Dr. Perry with Alex Lemieux and
She did a great job, by the way.
Yeah. These guys, we had several that we posted, I think those are just a couple we brought in here. We had a lot, had a real good time with that, and that was all a product of our athletes doing a great job and then our, our community council pushing, you know, being more involved. Go down a little bit, let me see what it says, go down. The last thing we got is our internal process, we're gonna, we conducted some surveys with our coaches, trying to gather more information for how to do a better job in the upcoming seasons. We, you know, we consolidated vendors, we've been using one vendor, and we've been getting good benefits from that. And what the last thing we'll do is trying to create a system-wide improvement plan for all of our extracurricular activities, similar to how we create a school improvement plan. And that's something we're working on right now, very much in the infant stage, but would welcome any, any ideas or any, you know, any, anything at all, I guess, that would be part of something we can do in, you know, a short-term plan, but also a three- or five-year plan of how to do a better job of things like, you know, community involvement and facilities and, you know, anything. But appreciate you guys, and if you've got any questions for me, I'd be glad to help you or answer your question.
I don't have a question, I just want to say how much I loved the idea of sending the athletes for the reading, I thought that was great.
Thank you, thank you. I can't take much credit for it, but I represent the people that did, so thank you.
And they didn't just read, they talked to the children about the importance of studying and, and working hard and, and one day being a big dragon
That's right.
down the road, so.
Yeah, they did a good job, the students, and they usually do impress you, and you give them an opportunity, and I was really impressed with them, really was.
And Coach Parker, we're concerned about soccer and the field conditions because of the rain and
Yes, ma'am, we had, you know, it's, it's a blessing that we have, our soccer program has probably more people in it than it's ever had, we've been able to play a lot of JV games, a lot of varsity games. And, you know, the field, just the weather has not been very good, and, you know, the field's just not in great shape there, but we, we're working on some alternatives to get the field in good shape, but also to give them opportunity to play. We have not had to cancel a game, we've had to move some, and, but the people have been very, very supportive, the parents and the coaches. We've actually had very, very little, if any, negative feedback, people understand, you know, we won't, we got to put the safety of the players, you know, ahead of everything, and the field's just not in great shape right now. You can't fix it in one day, but we are working toward making sure that doesn't happen again, and also make sure that our students have a chance to continue to play. So they played at Jasper Middle School twice this week and, and actually won both games, so maybe it was just, you know, good luck, we just, you know, maybe we should be playing there all the time, I guess we keep winning. But, but I do want to thank everybody that worked with us on that, because that's been a, that's been a challenge the last few days, Stacy's done a good job of working with us and trying to find as many options, and we're still looking for some options of things we can do moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is we need to approve a voting delegate for GSBA Conference in Savannah. I'm going to nominate Byron.
Byron did a great job last year.
Byron did a great job, Peggy has done it, I've done it, so it's, it's a great experience for us, Jared, to be able to
You do such an awesome job with the legislation stuff.
Yeah. This fits right into that.
And we appreciate it.
But no, seriously, I'm going to, I mean, I think everybody needs to experience it at least once, to sit there and see how GSBA does it. And here are some of the comments from other orgs. You, you'll be enlightened.
Great.
But
Talking about legislative experience, our Supertac teachers attended a committee meeting at the Capitol yesterday. They met with Rick Jasper's and attended the committee meeting that, that deals, the bill that deals with the TIM score for teachers and other, other issues connected with that. So we had wonderful representation yesterday at the Capitol, and I think it, it was a great experience, pretty good, right?
Yeah, one of our attendees is here.
Yeah, Lisa, but they didn't, I think it was later, whenever they got back, of course, the committee meeting didn't start until about 2 o'clock, 2 o'clock, so what time did you get back?
We left at 5:00.
5:00.
We got back at 7:00.
Yeah, left, yeah, left Atlanta at 5:00.
Ooh, there's no roads from Atlanta to get here.
No.
But, you know, it was a great opportunity for our teachers and pickings to have a voice at the Capitol, and I greatly appreciate the fact that they represented us so well. So thank you, thank you, Lisa, and our Supertac team.
So.
I'll second Mike's nomination.
Okay, so we have a nomination and a second. Anybody want to jump in and save her? Yeah, okay. All those in favor? Four. All those opposed? And one abstention?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from February 3rd, February 11th, and February 24th meetings. Take a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
How is it we approved the minutes as presented?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bell. All those in favor? Five oh. Next, we have surplus material from the transportation department. And I guess my question is, what are we going to do with it? Will it be an auction?
Yes, we'll do it, yeah. We've got two options, and one we really like and one we've checked around, know people use it, is a online auction company, they do it all.
Right.
They hand you your check and then they tell the people where to come to get the bus, we don't have to take it to them or anything. They seem to get good prices, and they seem to get better price for things than just doing a public auction.
Right.
But anyone can bid on it, still doesn't limit anybody from around here, did it?
Have we had any local interest?
Not so far. But I haven't advertised any of the things.
Okay.
We're up to 20 years old.
200,000 miles?
Yeah.
300,000.
I think we've done pretty good, though. The newest one's 17 years old.
Yeah, we've got some good service there, though.
I think that's pretty much a testament to the guys in the bus garage.
Absolutely.
All these buses have 200,000, 140 to 225,000 miles on. And they're still able, they're still able to keep them safe on the road, that's a testament to what they're able to do.
And we travel over 600 miles a day.
Yeah.
Yes.
That probably does conclude field trips.
No, that's routes, that's just routes.
Yep.
Our transportation department does an outstanding job. We have not been in the news and, you know, so lately, so one of our, District did, was on there about the school buses breaking down and the number of times
It was surprising, no school, they did a great job getting people in here.
They did, awesome.
Oh, Lord, I've never seen anything like that.
Right.
So knock on wood, I guess. I'm not knocking, but thank you.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the surplus as presented.
Second.
Second by Ms. Andrews, all those in favor? Next, I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent, and to consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement, claims, administrative proceedings, or judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the school district or an officer or employee, or in which the officer or employee may be directly involved. I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long, all those in favor? All those in favor? Five oh. Okay.
Here's all my questions.
What time was it, nine ten? At nine ten. Motion was made by myself and seconded by Ms. Andrews to end executive session. No action was taken. Now I hear a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read.
I make a motion for the minutes as read.
And I second.
Ms. Andrews and then Mr. Long, second. All those in favor? Five oh. Next on the agenda is a personnel action report.
I make a motion, we approve the personnel action report as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Bell. Seconded by Ms. Andrews. All those in favor? Five oh. Next on the agenda is board comments. Anybody have anything?
I would like to make a suggestion or request slash that prior to our ITN Square Swiss document, whatever we're calling it, session about our waivers, our strategic waiver plan. I believe we're meeting at 6:30 on Thursday, the 17th. Is that correct?
Six.
Six.
Six starts the public participation part of it.
That we have a work session about thirty to forty-five minutes prior to that time so that we can be sure that we have all of our questions answered before public participation gets started.
That same, you're saying the same day, thirty minutes prior. I like that.
So, so like...
Do.
Five thirty?
Five thirty, we'll have a work session.
Yeah.
Six thirty, we already announced a meeting. A call meeting, yeah.
Do you think there, there may be some questions on this related to waivers that possibly we may need information from Phil for, a legal opinion from him?
Mr. Landrum? He gets to be here with us.
No, he can't.
No, he can't?
No.
No, that's right, he can.
He, he's not going to be here that week. Because I'm going to, most of, just for general knowledge, most of the information contained in the strategic waiver application and contract, it's mostly state templates where we simply plug in the Pickens County information for it. And the waivers that, that Phil will recommend that, that we list in there are, it's like a pick and choose. You put them in, but that doesn't mean that you have to use them. Waivers we've used in the past are simply, for example, like class size. As of July 1, 2016, a school district cannot petition or cannot pass a resolution asking to stay bored for a waiver of class size if you are not either a charter system or a strategic waiver system. And we use that class size waiver every year because class numbers are so low that it would, it would take a tremendous amount of money to, to meet the, the criteria set for each one of the grade levels in terms of class size. We, we must have to the, to the DOE by April 1st, you know, a, a contract and an application in order to get approval for waivers for twenty sixteen, for the 2017 school year. They're not going to issue any. I think there's only a couple of school systems in Georgia that chose to, to remain status quo and not ask for, to become a strategic waiver system or a charter system there because most school districts can't afford it. So, these are, these are simply, most of them are templates that we fit, simply filled in the information for.
But it's not just a template. I mean, what Dr. Perry is saying is that we, we must have certain waivers in order to function as a district. We will not be able to ask for these waivers if we don't get this plan submitted by a board of ours. And what we have done, the state DOE has recommended that this group of waivers be asked for. Some of those waivers, we don't use now, but we're uncertain as to the amendment, we're uncertain as to what kind of amendment process is going to be there. And I have a, I have an issue with the state, DOE recommends that you ask for these, and we don't, and don't get the waivers for that. I worry about what the consequences are, especially when we're not required to use the waivers. You see what I mean? I mean, it's more like a safety net than, than we have to use.
Just because we want them, does not mean that Pickens County has to use it.
That's, that's what...
Our best bet is get every waiver we can get, and then if we need it, we have it, but...
We don't have to use it.
We, we wouldn't have the option to have it then.
And so, what, what we've done is, is a balance of getting every waiver we can get and still getting the plan approved. If you just say the Title 20, if nothing in Title 20 is going to apply, they're not going to approve their plan. But if we know that, if, we don't know, but we have a reasonable degree of certainty that if we apply for this body of, of code sections of state DOE rules to be exempted from, we feel like we have a good chance of, of getting that approved.
Right.
And so, it just seems like a safer harbor for us to be in, as opposed to, I, you know, for an extra hundred dollars, I do have a crystal ball that we can look into. I don't want to be three years into this, this contract and we say, you need this exempted. They say, well, no, no, why didn't you ask for it three years ago when we told you?
Right.
So, it's, it's brave new laws.
No, I mean, I had two people today asking me about the contract and just basically what it was. I'm not sure that people were going to question as much the waivers requested. Those two people were just curious, and I was just impressed that they looked, looked at it, and I thought that was fantastic. And they weren't questioning what was in it. They were questioning more why we're doing this. And so, once I explained what the situation was, they were, they were like, oh, okay, all right.
And I don't, I may be very, very wrong about this, but I don't know that you're going to see much of a change in the day-to-day operation of a school and how, or what it affects, has on employees, unless you get to that stage where you're not meeting, you know, where you're reporting, then, you know, there's mistakes of that one.
But the, the consequences there, I mean, those are, are state consequences.
Yeah, we can't take a change of...
Between the state of Georgia and the...
Yeah, but they're for every school system.
Every, you know, those, those consequences are the same, so we, we can't change those, the accountability, we can't change that. The contract, we can't change that. So, we had, you know, when it, when it comes really to, to how much control did we have of what goes in there, most of it was predetermined for us.
That's kind of the frustrating thing, is they're doing this to increase local control, and I'm not sure that that's really...
Right.
We have local control as long as we do everything they tell us to.
Right. That's called the facade of local control.
I would have certainly preferred...
We'll be held accountable for what they...
Oh, yeah, we'll be held accountable for it, yes.
I would have much preferred to have been with those two school districts that chose not to either go charter system or strategic waiver system, but I knew that as taxpayers, it would be a tremendous burden on the people in Pickens County.
Yeah, we couldn't do it. All right, so we're going to have a work session thirty minutes prior to the meeting, so...
I think it would just be...
Five thirty, work session, six o'clock, public participation, and six thirty, call me.
Action item vote at the conclusion of that, is that correct?
Six thirty at the call me.
You have the option to do that, that's what you choose.
Yeah.
Because we'll have to have it in bag before first. We don't have another scheduled board meeting before that.
They would have to schedule another.
Right, we'd have to schedule another meeting before then, if we don't vote for it that night.
Unless there are changes that we have to make, then I don't see any other connection.
I did send the, the DOE a, a copy of the link to our website. Howard Henley, y'all met Dr. Henley. I sent it to him today and said, please, take a look at this, give me a call so that we can talk about it, because he has, he's worked with this so much in, in the last year. So, we'll have some idea of what he thinks about what we have. But I called two superintendent friends, and one of them said that the DOE took that list of waivers that we're talking about, cleaned it up, and sent it back to him, you know. So, they're going to look at what's there, and if they think that, that the list is just not like they would like to have it, they're going to send, they're going to clean it up and send it back to us. You like that idea, though, Phil?
We're almost at the point that they should have just sent us the contract that they wanted us to, to have, because that's...
Oh, no, but then we don't have local control.
I understand, I understand.
There are also attorneys that have asked the DOE that, that question, pretty much.
Really? I mean, because that's the way I see it, is they're the ones that are going to tell us that, well, you can or can't have this, so why not just cut to the chase and send it to us and tell us what you want us to have?
And they recommend it to us what they want us to do.
Yeah, they recommend it, strongly recommend it.
Yeah, strongly recommend it.
It's going to be difficult, I think, for the public to understand unless you have spent hours working with this, because even the amount of time that we have put in it, and y'all put a lot of time in it, we still have questions. So, we'll try and answer them together.
Ms. Andrews, do you have a motion?
I make a move, we adjourn.
A motion by Ms. Andrews to adjourn. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Lewis. All those in favor? Five oh. Thank you for coming.